I would like to bring this meeting to order and have everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One name, one mission.
On my God. In his name. My beloved King.
That's all. I can't do it every day. Always gets me. Always wrong. It's really terrible.
Okay, our first order of business is, again, board reorganization. At our last meeting, we voted for a chair, or actually, we nominated, there was two nominations. There was a vote, which came to be a 5-5 vote. And then we agreed to table that. Wasn't exactly clear what was tabled, so I did check with the state. And what they recommended, the cleanest thing to do is to restart the nomination process and restart the voting process. And just consensus, that's perfectly fine with anybody. Speak up now if you want to do it differently.
I think Liz has a hand up.
What?
Liz has a hand up.
You are muted, Liz.
Sorry about that. I'm just, I'm ready to make a nomination, but I may have, that may have jumped me down a bit.
I will accept any nominations.
Okay, so BJ, I would like to nominate you. You've done a really nice job since we last met.
I second that nomination for BJ.
Any other nominations? Okay.
I'll nominate Len.
Okay, we have a nomination for Len. That said, everybody has a piece of paper?
Do you have a second?
What? Oh, do we have a second?
Yep. And Doug. And can I add something real quick?
Yes.
Before we move on. So I talked to Bruce this morning, and Bruce knew he wasn't going to be here. So Bruce gave me a vote. I told, I asked him if he had checked the bylaws, and he said he hadn't had time to do that. I told him I'd check bylaws. I'd check Robert's Rules, and I would share that with the board, just so that everybody knows where we are and why we're there. Our bylaws do not say anything about absentee voting. Our bylaws talk about in-person voting. And Robert's Rules reads, it's a fundamental principle of parliamentary law that the right to vote is limited to the members of an organization who are actually present at the time the vote is taken in a legal meeting. And it goes on to kind of explain why. But I did tell Bruce that I would, I would bring this to the board, and I would bring any context that I could with it, if that makes sense. So I'm just, just adding that for the record.
I am willing to, maybe not a vote, but a, could buy consensus.
Well, I-
I don't know what the-
I, I'm bringing that as an informational piece, not necessarily that there's any action or anything like that. Bruce asked me to bring it, and I told him I'd bring it with the context of Robert Rules and our bylaws. And at this point, Robert's Rules and our bylaws don't allow for absentee voting.
Okay, so then, well, let's see, the vote, and, or do you have something to say?
Well, I, we've never done that. And I, I would find it very uncomfortable that we just decide to do it now, without a full discussion and a policy, that would, or a change in the bylaws to, to support that. I mean, it's just, it just doesn't feel right.
Okay, Matt?
Unless our bylaws were specific about it, I would say we should follow Robert's Rules. That's what we've always done.
Okay, so Robert's Rules clearly states that we should not-
And part of the rationale is, the motion might actually not be what was intended. You know, so nominations, I think Bruce had a good idea what those nominations were going to be, but they may not have been exactly what he thought. There might have been some discussion, things like that, so-
Yeah, okay.
So it puts voting at a disadvantage for people not to have all the information, I think is the rationale.
I mean, it's one thing if you have like a proxy system.
Yeah.
But if you don't.
Sure. Perfect. Those of you who are digital, do you feel comfortable emailing Brian?
And I've got, so Len, Liz, Andrea, Sam, if you email me.
Okay.
And when folks are done, if you fold it in half, I'll come grab that.
It doesn't matter. Somebody's just asking for reappraisal services.
No, I don't know. My wife, no, she's on the select board.
I know, that's why I asked her, but I thought maybe you'd know.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we have board chair. Your work is not done because BJ's your board chair, so I think you probably need to elect a vice chair.
Congratulations, BJ.
Yep.
For the record, four, four votes, six votes was the final tally.
Okay, um, I also, so that means I need to officially resign from vice chair.
And Liz has maybe question, comment, or an addition there?
Okay.
I, I'm leaving the gate too fast.
Okay.
Go ahead, BJ.
That said, do I have nominations for vice chairs?
Andrea?
Andrea.
I nominate Len for vice chair.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations?
Is there a second on that?
Or, oh, sorry, is there a second on that? Doug? Okay.
Liz?
Liz?
I, so Andrea, I did not consult with you previously, but I would like to nominate you. I think you have demonstrated solid leadership skills, and I would like to see a little gender parity in our board leadership.
Thank you.
I'll second her. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I guess we are moving to a vote.
Okay, we have another six-four vote, and Andrea is, has been elected our vice chair.
I'm sorry, Len.
Okay. I guess we're moving on. So the next is the approval of the agenda.
Some move.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second discussion. Okay, um, can you guys hear me okay? I'm noticing I don't have one of the microphones for the other group pointed at me.
Oh.
You sound good to us, to me at least, virtually.
Okay.
And I see some nodding across other folks.
Okay, I just realized that I had the, that camera mic. Okay. Discussion about the agenda items. Seeing none. Okay, can I have a vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Here, Andrea, Sam, Len. Okay, uh, looks unanimous, so we're moving ahead with that. Next is public input and announcements, and I have something I would like to read just beforehand, and then we can get into the public announcements. I think it's, now, when I am reading, I want to state is, I'm not representing the board. I'm representing myself as a board member. I want that to be clear, especially since now I am chair. Okay? When I first started, the, when I first started, the entire board attended the Finance Committee meetings during the budget season. This allowed everyone to be fully informed and speak about budget questions. I personally did not attend the meeting starting last November about, when we were talking about the budget, and in doing so, it left me personally less able to talk about budget questions now. And I just wanted to apologize to the community, because that is on me. Several people have expressed support for the pairs via email, and in my initial emails, I stated that we were gathering information, and I encouraged people to talk to Brian Hill, our interim superintendent, while waiting. I did follow my own advice and had the conversation with Brian. I also spoke with Coral Stone, Coral, you up there?
Coral's on there, yep.
Wave your hand.
Yes.
Special Ed Director, and Liz, the Finance Committee Chair. In doing so, I learned more about Act 173, which was a huge influence on the budget this year. That act changed how special ed is funded. The passage of the act was based on some research at the state level. These are things that I've learned. The biggest benefit from the act is it also, is it opened up special educational personnel resources to all students who were previously restricted to only IEPs. Yeah. Now, before I make a response representing the entire board, I want to make sure all board members have the same opportunity that I had to really learn about Act 173, ask any questions, and understand the impact in schools, and also provide input into what our response is going to be. I just wanted to make that clear about that one. And we have Coral, who can, who's willing to answer any questions about that, especially if there is, if that does come up.
And BJ, I am as well.
And Liz, too. Like you said, Coral's, and I'm hoping that we can also come together to produce some more formal information about it, not at this meeting, but later on. And I definitely want to thank everyone who came out to show support and let us know your opinions. They are important for us to hear, so I thank you for coming out, thank you for everybody's up there. I do appreciate that. So I just wanted to read that first. That said, we have two people who have chosen to speak. Where's my thing? Julia, you, and I also have one other thing to read. I might pass that off onto somebody else, so I don't lose my voice by the end of the day, but Julia, did you want to speak?
Sure, do you want me to come over?
If you can come up to, where's the best place?
Right in the middle, if you're comfortable.
Yeah, right in the middle, I guess.
Hi, everyone. I don't know where the camera is, but hi, everyone. My name is Julia Wyman. I teach kindergarten and first grade at Clarendon Elementary School. I feel beyond blessed to have that role, and I am here representing a number of educators at Clarendon Elementary School, and I want to thank you all for your time. I am going to read a letter that was composed proudly by a number of educators, all that have signed, and I just personally want to say how proud I am of the team with whom I work, because this was not an easy task, and it was one that was really a collaborative effort. So I'm going to read the letter. It's dated March 15th. To the valued members of the MRUUSD School Board. We, as members of the Clarendon Elementary School Education Team, have deep respect for our school board, and we recognize that keeping a budget in check yet viable is of great concern. We are also aware that it has consequences. We are confident that the board will address our apprehension seriously, and believe that you will view this letter as a balanced and open-minded perspective. To that end, we, the undersigned, have very serious concerns associated with the short and long-term elimination outcomes of the budget as approved for fiscal year 2022, 2023. The new and perhaps unanticipated constraints on budget expenditures will increase our class sizes, pivoting the curriculum role by pinching educational resources. Over the past six years, district policies have been put in place that were designed to ensure all students receive the education necessary to be successful in life. We have taken great pride in being able to meet learners where they are, regardless of age or grade level. Have those policies been displaced by others that we don't know about? For instance, the removal of all general education paraprofessionals will significantly impact the educational support that many of our learners require. One of the many programs that CES has implemented over the past few years to improve primary reading instruction is our guided reading program. This program is designed to allow for individualized reading instruction to target those students who need the extra help that they might not be able to gain during group instruction. This is especially crucial to our learners who are below grade level in reading, yet do not qualify for special education services. This core group of learners is put most at risk when we reduce the number of general education staff and paraeducators. Support staff shuffling will also mean time required for retraining, and those with specialized skills may no longer find them applicable to their new positions. These specialized skills are crucial to the programs we have developed, and their loss will be felt by the entire learning community. Further, a lack of support staff means that we will not be able to provide enough personalized tiered intervention that so many of our learners require to address the knowledge gaps caused by COVID-19-related absences. After two full years of COVID chaos, which has impacted each and every one of our students, we are at a loss at the board's economic reasoning. Additionally, we will not have enough personnel to ensure safe environments, both indoors and out, as well as coverage when substitute teachers are unavailable. This last part is something that we know the district has really tried to help with. However, too often, our specials teachers are called to cover instead of substitutes. With fewer specials teachers available next year due to staffing cuts at the elementary level, this problem might become further exacerbated. We honestly believe that the quality, the quality of instruction and our children's academic well-being are in jeopardy. We have been working hard to improve our already unsatisfying testing outcomes, and we fear that losing staff will continue to widen the achievement gaps. Teachers are resilient, but not without emotions. We will do what we can in a new environment, as our first responsibility is to the education of those put in our charge. However, without clear and effective communication and necessary staffing, the board will continue to see a decline in our morale, our enthusiasm, and, most importantly, our learners' achievement levels. We appreciate the time and effort the board puts into protecting the education of our learners. We look forward to hearing from you, and we are sincerely grateful for the time and energy you continue to lend this community. Respectfully, Joe Berlone, Jamie Consolati, Katrina Gedney, Francesca Girardi, Alexis Hodson, Michael Lannan, Lynn Peacock, Shannon Phillips, Paula Reynolds, Heather Rogellato, Tracy Tinsley, and Julia Wyman. Thank you.
Next on our list is David, and is there somebody who wants to read this after him? Instead of me?
Sure.
You willing? Yeah, you get to read that after. David, you want to come up?
Sure.
Is that you?
That wasn't me, no.
Oh.
I'll read it. I'll read it. Let him read it.
I have a minimum of three minutes, I read.
Officially, yes, minimum of three minutes, but-
My name is David Cornwell, live in Wallingford. I have a kindergarten at Wallingford Elementary School and a seventh grader at Low River Middle School. I'm here, actually, my, this is my first school board meeting I've attended, even though I've had kids in the district for a long time. I was kind of caught off guard by a conversation I had with one of the teachers or after-school folks at Wallingford, letting me know that the three Jan Ed pairs at Wallingford were essentially losing their positions. And I, I was kind of floored, because, I'm going to try not to be as blunt as I want to be, that, that is one of the most short-sighted, ill-conceived ideas you could think of. You know, I can't speak as eloquently as the educator who spoke before me on this topic, and haven't had time to write in that speech, but I will say that COVID has absolutely raised the stakes in education. It has made serving students significantly harder. And I've worked in a local school for 15 years, and I've been in education for over 20. So the timing is terrible. We have kids with greater needs across the board. Jan Ed kids with greater needs who have huge skill deficits across grade levels, and then we're taking away supports. People can't find staff to fill positions, and we're cutting positions? It's ludicrous. Frankly, if you can have early interventions in like the primary grades, K to 3, K to 4, K 6, you're going to save thousands of dollars in money later. If you can address academic needs, social-emotional needs, counseling needs, behavior challenges in the primary grades, and have kids feel connected to school, they will do better in middle school and high school and beyond. So if you take away interventions in the primary grades, you will have more students showing adverse effect. They will test positive for SLDs, they will do worse, and they will cost the district more money to serve those same kids in 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 3, and beyond, if we don't have early interventions. And those interventions cannot be limited just to math or reading interventionists. You need people in the classroom who can fill the gap between the teacher and the interventionist, and that, those people are these paraeducators. So fiscally, it's a terrible idea. Educationally, it's a terrible idea. It's also just not the right thing to do for these kids. They need these supports, and teachers need the help. Teachers have more and more being put on their backs. The stress has gone up more and more, we have more and more challenges. We need, teachers need paraeducators to support kids and support them. We can't just keep asking staff to do more, or people will leave. People will leave this district. Finding staff is expensive, training staff is difficult, and really, you need people in a position for five to seven years to truly understand the district's mission, vision, grading systems, et cetera. Losing those people will cost you guys money, and it will affect kids' education. So I would strongly encourage people to reconsider this short-sighted move. Thank you.
Okay. I'll let, yeah, you read it. Was there a, was there a digital person, too?
Yeah, do you want to let the person who's live read?
Who is speaking digitally?
I think Margot had signed up.
Margot.
Hey there.
There you are. Okay, I see you.
Can you hear me? Yeah, sorry, I'm in my closet here. So I'm here to say that I'm one of the families that's leaving the district because of decisions like cutting general ed. My husband and I are gainfully employed, we're happy to pay higher taxes, we love our schools, we love our teachers, we have three children. I know of eight children in the district whose parents are doctor, lawyer, engineer, choosing to homeschool because the school isn't, by their definition, doing the right thing for the kids. And those are dollars that you guys are missing out on. So if it's really a fiscal question, and these, they're not for religious reasons or anything, they're just homeschooling because they want the best for their kids, and they are worried that Wallingford and other schools in the district aren't going to get there. And that's terrible, you know? We're leaving to go to Rutland Town for, essentially because the turnover has been ridiculous at Wallingford. We've been here nine years, and it's been about a 75% turnover of staff annually. The culture at the school is sad and lonely and kind of, you know, disappointing. I think everybody's trying to do what they can, but there's not a lot of unification there. And Jane and Tammy specifically, who are the two pairs that I know personally, just from experience with my own children, are two of the people that have stayed through all of it. And they got an email on a Tuesday. They didn't get a meeting. They've been there 20 years, or more, I don't even know. Maybe some of you had them as teachers or pairs, or, but they are really important, and you're going to drive away more people, more families, more teachers, and it's just going to become a self-fulfilling proxy. And I know that the state played a shell game with you guys with dollars, and Act 173 caused this to be, you know, the issue at hand. I think there needs to be a shift in your governance procedure with finance committee meetings. BJ, you touched upon it. I think all board members should, should go to those. I think it's too much for one person or two people to deal with by themselves, especially when you're talking about staff cuts. And I think there should be some kind of notification within the community that says, hey, there's going to be an open forum to discuss that these cuts across the community that are going to affect classrooms, because we all got hit over the head with this one. And I get budgets, I work in finance, but you've got to try to turn, you know, water into wine yet again by stealing dollars from someplace else. In this new digital world, where we all work in different locations, are there rules that could be administratively done from home, so that the person could have more than one school under their belt and save $100,000 there? It's my understanding that it was a $500,000 gap that you were trying to cover, and the pairs filled that gap. I agree with David, it's a very short-sighted decision. I mean, I just had parent-teacher conferences this week. One teacher credited Tammy with, you know, doubling my kid's math score and their star 360, because he said, I only need the pair one hour a day, and luckily, they're, she's so great that this is, this is the outcome, right? It really makes a difference. And my kids are not, you know, superstars, they're not bottom of the, they're like normal kids just in school. They're not needing any special help with things, generally speaking. But they make such a difference, and you are shooting yourselves in the foot. The reputation of the district is going, getting worse and worse. And it breaks my heart, because I love Wallingford, I think it's a great town. It's a wonderful place to be, and it's bittersweet that we're leaving. There are, you know, a lot of people who care about these kids, you guys are some of those people. I know you're not on the school board for the money, you know? So regardless of, you know, the background, you guys are all working hard to do what's right for kids, and I implore you to try to rethink where those dollars could come from. As a taxpayer, you could raise my taxes if you told me there was a special item that was going to cost me $250 more a year if I knew it was going to my elementary school, even if my kids had already been through it, but I wanted to support school, sign me up. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
So you hear a lot of people talking about how they don't want their taxes raised and, you know, all day long. When you are dealing with the cost of what David was mentioning, education later, the money annually now is, is worth it.
Thank you. Okay. Gail, I see you have erased your hand, I know you didn't sign up. Are you, did you want to speak quickly?
Yes, real quickly, I agree with everything that David and Margot just said, even though I don't know them very well. The only thing I'm concerned about is, as a virtual watcher, I have no idea how many school board members are really in your room, if everyone is in attendance. And I think that's important for the people watching the, the meeting.
Okay. That's good advice, and I will say-
Thank you.
Yeah. That said, I think, I'm going to say, I'm here, I'm Bjorn.
I'm Josh, so I'm here as well.
We have Adrian.
Adrian's here.
Matt Gouchberg, Clarendon.
Paul Garum, Wallingford.
Joe Burrow, Clarendon.
And I want to thank Paul, since he was the, this is his first official board meeting. You attended the retreat digitally, but welcome. I don't think we got to officially do that.
Thank you.
So, so does that mean that Bruce and Matt are, are in the meeting?
Matt's right here.
I'm here, Matt Gouchberg's here.
Oh, okay, hi, Matt, okay.
Bruce, I believe, is-
Bruce is not in attendance, yeah.
Especially absent.
Yep.
Okay, you know, it just makes a difference for us to know who's really there or not, so I appreciate that, thank you.
That's good advice for the hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gail, one, or of you, should we be saying who's speaking when we're speaking? Because I was at a virtual meeting for our-
It's not a bad idea.
And, and I had no idea who was speaking unless I happened to recognize their voice. This is Adrian, by the way. So I think that would be nice if, if we say something, we say who we are.
Okay. I think everybody's going to be tired of my voice eventually, but we'll go with that.
that.
Yeah, you don't have to do it.
Okay. You want to, you have one more to read.
Yeah, I can read this, and I apologize if I stumble over it. But, this is from Shannon Merritt. So, "My name is Shannon Merritt. Much of my life has been spent in this school district. First, as a student at Wallingford Elementary School, then as a graduate of Mill River Union High School. Now, I'm in my fifth year of teaching kindergarten at Wallingford Elementary School. Every day, as with many other educators in this district, I pour my heart and soul into what I do for my students. The first two foundational beliefs of the Mill River School District are what really drew me to working for this district. All students feel valued, respected, cared for, and loved. Educators feel valued, respected, and supported. However, after hearing the recent news of classroom paraeducator positions being cut for next year, I'm feeling anything but valued, respected, and supported. Our paraeducators are the heart of our schools, supporting our students and teachers. We cannot do what we do as teachers on a daily basis if not for our paraeducators. I ask you to spend today in any of our classrooms to see what it is truly like. Imagine, you are the solo teacher in a classroom of 23, 5, and 6-year-olds. You have one student having a breakdown because they can't write the letter A. Another is over by the bookshelf pulling off books off the shelf, throwing them because they can't regulate their emotions. Another is crying because they miss their mom, and another is yelling from the bathroom that they had an accident. All while you're being expected to teach them how to read, how to write, how to add and subtract, how to be kind, how to be good humans. Build all the foundational skills so that students can feel successful and cared for. For instance, let me describe an event that happened today. This was before lunchtime. A student was unable to identify their feelings and was only able to communicate their needs through throwing items around my classroom. The student continued to do this through my lunchtime. Upon my return, I found my paraeducator standing outside the classroom doing word games with my students, sitting on the hallway floor for their safety. While this child was still in the classroom, still unable to identify the problem that they were having. So, I ask you, how would you do this all on your own? Would you feel supported? These are some of the exact reasons that we need our paraeducators. They are important and they matter, just like our students are important and matter. We are not putting students and educators first when decisions like these are made. After all, isn't it our students and educators that are the heart of our schools? Without those, it would just be an empty building. We are failing our students when we expect teachers to be able to educate our students and meet their many needs with no support. The students of today have many different needs besides just what we are expected to teach them and to test them on. Thank you for taking your time to read this. Sincerely, Shannon Merritt."
Okay. Before we go into discussion, I do want to thank everybody who did take the time to come out here, who did take the time to email. And hopefully, at the end of this meeting, we'll, I'll be responding with the board's response to the emails that were sent. Hi, Tanya, I see you there. I knew you were one of them. Discussion, I mean, that's one of the things that we now have, is discussion about public input.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll echo what BJ said. We need to hear from people. We need that feedback. We need to know how people feel about what we're doing in our schools. And I think, I, I'm impressed that BJ, you know, owned something he could have done better because something I've been thinking about a lot. And somebody gave me feedback too, and helped me to find a place where I could own something that I could have done better, and reach out to people and apologize to people. And I think we have an incredible opportunity here to work together. I think Margot pointed it out, we have a common goal. We're here for the kids. We don't always get it right, but we're here for the kids. And the more people we have involved in respectful discourse, the better work we do, absolutely. So, I really do appreciate everybody sharing their thoughts and feelings. That's hugely important to the work that we do. And I think in myself personally, I have to catch myself from being defensive when I get feedback. I used to be really bad about that. I've gotten a little better about that, because when people give me feedback, I can get better. And, and when I'm not looking to blame somebody else and I can own my own piece of it, I do a better job. So, I appreciate the feedback that we've gotten, and I appreciate the tone and the respect and the conversation, because that discourse is important. Sorry. Thank you for letting me.
Yeah. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I'm gonna actually go with Paul and then Liz.
Well, I'm the new guy on the block here.
Yep.
I probably shouldn't even be talking, but I happen to be married to a woman who taught for over 30 years and 25 of them. And I sort of brought her up to speed on what I was reading for emails or on the, on the company billboard. And she gave me the tutorial, which I already sort of knew, because I would hear from her on a daily basis. She's retired now, but when she was teaching. And she said her para, if she hadn't had her, she would have retired two years early because she couldn't have dealt with the group that she had at that time. No way without. So, I, I've never been a teacher, I've never been in education, but I can understand the dynamic and a couple of these people did a wonderful job of laying it out for us.
I think we nominated you to Finance Committee, right?
Yeah.
While you were here.
Well, I haven't been to a Finance Committee meeting, but-
Future. Looking forward to having that there. Liz?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So, I just want to start by thanking everyone who has given, you know, contacted us and touched base with us. I want to start by saying that the board feels in the bottom line of the budget, that we do not deal in specifics around reductions. Those are conversations that the superintendent has with building principals. And so, when we get emails and people show up to say they're upset about this RIF or that RIF, we don't know about RIFs. And because everyone in education hates acronyms, RIF is reduction in force. Okay? It's a pink slip. So, again, when, when we get these emails, this is news to us, because these are not, we are not involved in the day-to-day operations of the schools. If people were RIF, we don't know that that's happened, and we don't know who's involved. So, I just want folks to understand that. Also, a reminder, we cannot publicly discuss personnel issues. I do urge everybody to talk to their building principals, because I'm concerned that perhaps, Andrea, I'm gonna take a second unless you want to interject.
No, I want to go after you.
Okay. Because I'm gonna be a second.
Thank you.
I, I am concerned about the language I'm hearing. I'm afraid that a narrative has been established and is now being perpetuated that may not be accurate, because I'm hearing things that, again, we're not involved in the day-to-day. We're not in the buildings to know how building principals are handling the things that they, you know, plan to do in conjunction with the superintendent. Again, the board's work is to establish a budget, but we don't necessarily, um, okay, I, I'll come back to that. So, I had written out some notes just so I could explain the budget process. So, I want to read this. "The fiscal year 23 budget discussion began in earnest at the October 25, 2021 meeting of the Finance Committee. These meetings are open to the public and minutes are available on the district's website. The committee met almost weekly during subsequent weeks. We met November 15th, November 22nd, November 29th, December 6th, and December 20th to analyze, build, and prepare the budget in close consultation with the superintendent, the business manager, business, I'm sorry, building principals, and district leadership. At the December 1st meeting of the full board, it was presented publicly that factors impacting the fiscal year 23 budget included Act 173 funding changes that would shift reimbursement for special services to a block grant model, resulting in a reduction of, I believe it's $510,000 available to the district. Another factor impacting the fiscal year 23 budget is reduced student enrollment, which is both a statewide and local pattern dating back to the early 2000 and which translates to a reduction of funds available to the district. And I just want to elaborate on enrollment. So, we saw people leave the district during COVID to homeschool. They moved to private schools that weren't remote or hybrid, and we lost some tuitioning students for those same reasons. And with them, we were left with a $250,000 more or less shortfall. Okay, that was actually my third bullet. All right. So, it was, it was shared at the December 1st meeting that rolling over the current budget to next year, that's always where we start. We always start with, can we keep our budget? Let's look at that. And we couldn't, excuse me one second. Rolling over the current budget would have resulted in a projected 10% tax rate increase, which we didn't think would fly with the electorate. If you've been paying attention over the past two years, one of our pressures locally has been complaints about our per pupil equalized spending dollars. Now, unfortunately, that was a false narrative. It was being circulated that we were the highest spending district or one of the highest spending districts in the state. That is not true. Can you get my tissue? Excuse me. Allergies. Allergy season is here. So, right, a, you know, part of what we do as board members is we, we are representatives from our communities, and we pay attention to front porch forums, to social media. We talk to people. And, you know, it's been circulated pretty well for two years that we're a high per pupil spending district, which, again, it's not true. We're in the middle quintile. We're right in the middle in state spending. But, you know, in light of that, we didn't think we could, you know, raise, raise folks' taxes 10%. And Margot, thank you for saying you're willing to, you know, invest in our children. I am too, right? Not everybody feels that way or is able to. Anyway, so we decided that, okay, where am I? So, it was shared at the December 1st meeting of the full board that the committee had targeted $1 million in reductions in order to contain any tax rate increase to between 2% and 3% maximum. That was our goal. And that's where our work ended, and we handed it off to the superintendent to work with building principals to identify the reduction. This is after we looked at the full budget for the district, line by line, all 100 pages, and couldn't come up with an area that we could reduce because over the last several years, we have been containing the budget. You'll recall during COVID, we contained the budget, right? Because people weren't getting paid. People lost their jobs. So, we contained the budget, which meant because of rising costs in certain areas, and I should say, and we added school counselors, right? We made investments in transportation, because transportation needs in our district are very important. We added special educator, or not special educators, school counselors. Our healthcare costs went up, so we were able to manage our budget without cutting any staff. Okay. It was also announced at the December 1st meeting that the following areas were areas of consideration for reduction in order to mitigate tax rate increases. Building-based and central office administrative roles, support staff, teaching positions, technology and professional development spending, transportation program offerings. Now, remember, we work as a committee in consultation with school leadership, with the superintendent, with building-based principals. Each of these considerations was carefully weighed by the committee in consultation with the superintendent, the business manager, building principals, and district leadership, and included local data, so that impact on students' families' programs and taxpayers were fully considered and evaluated. Okay, I already said this. I'm gonna say it again, I'm sorry. Starting with a loss in revenue of $510,000 because of the Act 173 funding change, and a loss of tuition revenue of $250,000 due in part to increased homeschooling and the move by some to district schools with more in-person learning. While we were remote and hybrid during COVID, budget reductions were achieved through all of the aforementioned means excepting transportation. Staff cuts were and are always the absolute last place we look to trim the budget. Please keep in mind, however, that the board, we don't know what those staff cuts look like. That's not part of our purview. So, that's building principal information. So, please speak with your building principals. Our budget is so skinny that staff reduction was the only area in which any meaningful budget reduction could be achieved. Building principals and district leadership worked with the former superintendent to arrive at carefully considered cost savings through budget reductions in order that a sound budget be presented to the electorate. Our budget, excuse me, was approved by about 65% of voters. All right, I already said that.
Liz?
Yeah?
I'm wondering if-
Oh, I want Coral to jump in.
Yeah, we are.
Andrea's been really good.
Yeah, we have Andrea and Adrian.
Okay.
Both asked. I'm just wondering if this could also be expanded into a community conversation too, what you're talking about. Does that sound like a, also a good place to go with this?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool.
And I have to turn off my video. I have to blow my nose.
Don't blame you. Okay. Coral, if you can hold on for a second, I do want to hear from, I'm gonna go with Adrian?
I, I was hoping, all of, all of the comments are entirely valid, and I, and I understand where people are coming from. I think if, if we understand the background of Act 173 and the focus on having licensed, trained teachers providing the services that have been done by general ed, paras. And, and I understand that, that every single one of our paras are valuable in our schools. But if the state come down, comes down and says, we want trained, licensed people teaching students, and that's what we want. And the NEA is, is supporting that. The board does not really have a whole lot of say, saying, no, we, we would actually have, would like to have education presented in a different way. We're the experts in our district. But what I'd really like us to listen to is how our administrators are going to be supporting our teachers, providing services to our students so that nobody is lost in this, in this change in, in staffing. Because we will be able to have special ed staff, special ed paras, working with all students now. I mean, there is not going to be that only pay for specific services with specific kids. That is the focus of Act 173. And I think we need to keep that in mind, and we need to hear from our, our, our other staff to say how this is gonna happen, because there's a lot of, you know, insecurity everywhere on, on this kind of change. And, and we need to, to make people feel better about it. And I don't know if the board can do that, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I had to learn a lot about Act 173 very quickly.
So, I mean, I think there's a plan. So, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, Adrian, that's, that's gonna be what I'm speaking on this evening. So, when we get there, if you just let me know.
Okay.
Great.
Andrea?
So, I totally forgot what I was gonna say before, but I was manning the chat a little bit, and Tanya Perrin brought up an idea about, yes, having a, definitely go to community engagement. Sam, I'm assuming, sorry I missed the meeting. Sam, I'm assuming, sorry I missed the meeting. Because we are not passing the buck. We are trying to give the community enough time to actually be able to voice and have us be able to respond. It's really hard right now when we had 10 minutes allotted and yes, we're way over that because we want to speak, but our community engagement, community engagement is definitely our committee that does this and definitely can be a hot topic for that too. So I wanted to just make Tanya and some of the others feel completely okay with that. And I really don't honestly remember what I was going to say before, so there you go.
Matt, do you want to go before or after Coral?
I'll go quickly. It's just a quick question. This is actually for Brian. I was, I mean, I had sent out an email a few days ago. I'm sure I didn't make any friends. It's perfectly fine. It was my own opinion. That being said, I was going over my notes from the February 16 board meeting. And unless I wrote my notes down incorrectly, I thought you had said that we were eliminating open positions we couldn't fill.
So I think the challenge is that a lot of numbers, a lot of things were thrown out.
Okay.
And there's this thing where we have special education positions that are not filled and we have not been able to fill. And we are eliminating positions that are filled, but we have spots for folks to land if they choose to stay with us.
I was misunderstood.
No, and I apologize if I did not say that well. Absolutely.
And I'm going to, that's one of the reasons why I wrote the apology because I do believe I had that misconception to myself.
I went into it thinking that we were eliminating positions that were open and weren't actually eliminating filled positions.
Yeah. And something I want to be clear on, we did have...
I'm sorry if I put that poorly.
Last year, we had a very hard time. It was last year we had a very hard time filling these positions. And at one point, we did have, what, 10 positions open last year?
You know, as...
Something that I...
Eight or so or something, and Coral may remember better, but we've struggled to hire special education paras.
So, yeah. I didn't ask the right questions and that's why, since I didn't go into the meetings and why I apologize and why I think we do need that fundamental change come October, November about the whole board really making an effort to attend those meetings. Okay, Coral, would you please speak?
I sure will. So just to give folks some context, for those that are on the call who don't know me, I am your Director of Student Services. I have spent probably the better part of the last four years researching and studying Act 173. And I don't claim to be an expert and I'm not going to make you any guarantees, but I just want to put context out there that if anyone understands the implications around special ed funding and allocation of resources, it is me. So I'm going to talk to you tonight with some confidence because I hear a lot of people that are afraid and also a lot of people that are just ridiculously overwhelmed when they think about themselves in a room with 20 or more children all alone handling gosh knows what can happen in a school day. I'm a mom of two children and I can barely contain them sometimes. So when I think about teachers with 15, 20, 25 children, I feel that overwhelm for them. One of the things I'm hearing people say are things like general education and special education para. The reason you're doing that is because you've been using those terms for the better part of 22 years. Come July 1, you're not going to use those terms anymore, okay? And the reason you're not going to use those terms anymore is because we're just going to call them paraeducators. And the reason for that is that those folks are, at any point in their school day, they could expect to be working with general education students and/or special education students, but they're just going to be called paraeducators from this point forward in July. Now, the reason that I am pointing that out to you is because I am not sure if everyone here or if everyone that has concerns, I don't know the level to which you are all familiar with Act 173. I don't know the level to which you've studied it or researched it. I will tell you this, I have read the act cover to cover, probably the better part of 60 times in order to be able to talk to you tonight. Act 173, for those that are not aware, which I suspect could be, you know, people are going to have varying levels of awareness, so I'm just going to kind of talk to the middle part of the population this evening. Act 173 makes provisions that have not ever been experienced. What I mean by that is that for the past 22-plus years, we have functioned in a state where special education personnel could only, only serve children with disabilities on IEPs. So your special education funding that is provided can only be applied to a very certain population. Now, here's a problem with that. What about all the other students without disabilities who also need maybe a special service, a special support? They need something more. In fact, I think, and I forget the gentleman's name, but I think it was David, was one of our public speakers, you know, and David was talking about kids that are in the classroom that are struggling and he's absolutely right. He actually made a huge part of my presentation for me. We have intense obligations under Act 173 that have not been really solidified in the law prior to July 1 of this coming year. And what I mean by that is that you now have all of these personnel that you have never been able to access for children in the general education environment. What I mean by that is, I heard Shannon Merritt's letter for example, and Shannon was describing the situation of a child evidently that had a struggle in her classroom. Well, under your previous rules, we would not be able to deploy any sort of special education personnel to help in that situation. We would not be able to deploy a school psychologist or a counselor who's funded with your special education dollars. But moving forward, we have like incredibly relaxed flexibility around those rules. What I mean by that is, you have a class of, let's say, 22 children. It's not uncommon for a paraeducator to be in that room for all of the day or part of the day. But here's where the rubber meets the road. That paraeducator can now serve groups of children in that classroom. That paraeducator can now work with children who are not on IEPs. A special educator can do the same thing. One of the greatest conflicts that I have with myself most often is that I have absolutely fantastic, top-notch special educators. I have like incredible people and they are deeply, deeply limited with what children they are allowed to work with. And yet I look at them and I see their skill set and I know how amazing they are and I know there are a whole bunch of kids that could benefit from their expertise, yet state law, federal law has prohibited that. So one of the things that we want to think about is, you're really deploying resources that you haven't had access to in decades at this point. Now, the one thing that Act 173 is going to require us to think about is groupings. So for example, you know, you may have a reading intervention that's working with just two or three kids at a time, maybe just one kid. Well, that's a pretty small group if you think about it, when the law allows us to have anywhere up to eight. So we really have to think about how we're serving kids, whether it's one-to-one or whether it's in groups or, and again, what the resources are to make that happen.
Hey Coral.
The other thing I want to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't want to cut you off too much. You're more than welcome to go ahead. Like I said, I think we should have a community conversation about this and be able to have an extended conversation.
I'd like to hear what she has to say.
I don't want to, I just want to keep on going. So, go ahead, keep on going. I just wanted to also specify that I want to include that.
Okay. So the last thing I'll just say too, that I know has come up as a concern is that teachers and parents and community members are really feeling like a lack of resources, which I get. And the other thing I want to point out though is that prior to the start of Act 173, kids who are not on IEPs were not able to have access to specialized programs because those programs were earmarked for kids with disabilities. Under Act 173, the school district has the ability and the funding to now create programs that can serve spectrums of kids. So work that's been done behind the scenes that I'm thinking people aren't aware of is programs are being set up, materials are being purchased, like staff schematics are being developed so that we can figure out what types of programs and where we need to put them in order to make sure that we are serving all of these kids. So I just put that out there. I just, I don't know if people are aware of like the scope of work that is encompassed under Act 173, but if you haven't read it, you really have got to do that. And I would encourage you to read it in a quiet place and make sure that you understand what it calls for because it is a drastic act, but it does open up access to resources you haven't had before.
Okay. Thank you, Coral. And like I said, we're going to follow up definitely with some more information. Does anybody have any questions?
I sent it to everybody.
Oh, you sent the act?
Yes.
Okay, so Adrienne was kind enough to send the actual act to all the board members. I would encourage public to reach out to your building administrators. I see one of them. I would encourage the employees to reach out to your building administrators too so that information gets disseminated down to us properly. Brian, you've been willing to have conversations with people?
So am I.
And Coral's willing to have conversations with people?
Point of order.
Yeah.
Could you clarify again what the purpose of the school board is as a organization? Is it to guide the district's mission of what they want to see happen in schools? Or is it to, and where does that line end? In other words, is it only, is the school district's purview only to look at financial matters? Or does the school board's purview carry perhaps more into decisions around hiring and firing and things like that? Like where does that, because the board, the superintendent works for you guys.
Yeah.
So where does that line perhaps fall?
We are a governance board. I got to defer.
It sort of depends on, hi, this is Adrian. It sort of depends on how a board operates. There are boards that are entirely a governance model that all they do is talk to the superintendent.
How does this board operate?
This board is a mix.
Okay.
We've never moved that far. We don't, we have conversations on hiring. We approve hires. We don't necessarily approve firings and RIFs. We defer to a certain extent. We are given a plan and we would either approve it or not. But no, we do not get into weeds of how an individual school operates. I mean, we just, rightly or wrongly, you ask how we want.
Who do we talk to when we have concerns? Do we speak to our building administrator? Or do we speak to you? Because I'm hearing kind of a mixed message.
There's that chain of command to talk to. If it's a specific issue with a student, you start with your teacher.
Of course, I understand that.
Right, okay. So if there's a bigger issue, I would start with your building administrator and ask those questions and then go to the superintendent.
The easiest way that I understand it is if you look at our committees. We have negotiations, we have personnel, which a large job of the personnel committee is to evaluate the superintendent and approve hires. We don't really get into many weeds on that. Len can definitely speak to it. Policy, which is our written, we'll look at those. Buildings and grounds. Community engagement is our newest one. And finance, the biggest job of finance is to work with the administration to approve that. I was on it a few years ago. I haven't been on recently. And if I remember correctly, a lot of that came from building administrators talking with the superintendent about their needs for the school and what they want to fight for, what they don't want to, what are the needs for the school? The superintendent then coming to us with some recommendations. The board itself looked, tried to represent the community in terms of what they're willing to pay. And I have a father who tells me every single day, I see him, he doesn't want his taxes going up. And I work for a school, so they're out there. And so our job is to look at, okay, what type of raise do we think the community can handle? A 10% raise is hard for us to, as a representation of the community, to say they can handle it. So that's where it kind of goes back and forth. And I'm assuming that's still kind of the case? Like I said, I've been off of it for a few years. Liz, that's kind of the process still? Did I explain that?
I was reading the chat.
Okay.
Say that again, sorry.
Don't worry about it then.
Okay.
Okay, so that is what I know of the process. Does that help?
Somewhat, yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion by admins or school board members that related to this? Sam, I think you're going to be busy with scheduling.
Yeah, I've only been quiet because I was going to talk during the community engagement report.
Okay.
If that makes sense to folks.
I'm just saying that I think you're going to be busy.
I'm glad, please. That's the point. This is great to have topics that folks want to hear more about and we have experts that can talk to, speak to these topics. So I look forward to facilitating those conversations.
Okay. That said, I'm going to move on to approval of minutes. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from 3 to 22?
So moved, Adrian.
Second, Liz.
All in favor? There, there. Andrea, Liz. Liz, okay, I think that's everybody, so...
Sorry, I have a dog biting me.
It's okay. Now we have student representatives update. Where are they hiding?
So...
There they are.
We're here. Not really much to discuss, but the week of April 4th, we're doing another spirit week and that Friday, we are going to be doing a spring dance later on that night. Spring sports are starting, which is really exciting. I'm doing baseball and we are doing a pitchers and catchers week and there is a lot of people signed up for baseball alone and all across the spring sports. Let me check my notes. There is 120 students that are signed up for spring sports. And the numbers of the participation is wonderful. I love seeing the number of kids on baseball alone and I spoke to Ms. Minari about numbers for middle school softball, middle school baseball, 9th through 12th softball, 9th through 12th baseball, ultimate frisbee, and unified basketball. And the numbers compared to previous years are increased by a lot and it is exciting to see that. Masks have gone away. I think a lot of students are excited about that as well. Yeah, I think it is going very good for this part of the school year with everything within school and even extracurricular.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to speak more.
And always a reminder, if there are...
I have a question for you, Sid. If I can, or a question of either of you. How is student morale now that the masks have gone? And how is it between if a student chooses to still wear a mask and students that don't wear masks?
We're going to have to apologize. As soon as it starts speaking, the whole wifi cut out and we only have the last 10 of that. Could you repeat that for us, please?
So I just wondered, Sid, how student morale has changed with the masks option of not having them? And if you experienced any stuff with students or personnel that still want to wear a mask... to wear a mask and students that don't want to wear masks? If you can kind of just touch on that a little bit?
Most of our school is not... From me going around school between classes, students aren't wearing masks, like most of them. Some of them still wear them, some teachers still wear them, but most of the students and teachers are just not wearing them. So that, yeah. We're coming up to part.
Yeah, there are still students who do wear them, and there's students who, I'd say, I would say the majority of students don't. There are, I've seen a couple times where a student will come in one day without a mask and the next day with one. I think a lot of the students feel more on the fence about whether they want to wear one or not just because for a while it was just the normal. And they still want to take that precaution, but do want to feel back into the normal, back, you know, prior, pre-COVID.
Thank you, Sid. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And a reminder, chime in on any other agenda items if you have some things you want to add as we're going through the whole meeting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to add a little bit more. I see, how are the elementary, yearly young elementary school students doing that have never been in school without a mask? I don't know if we have any other principals.
I can speak to the masks when I go to talk a little bit.
Okay.
Unless you want me to just...
No, okay. We can go then. I was just realizing.
My five-year-old on Sunday said she was very excited but also very nervous, you know, and she, because she only had a half, she had a fall semester before she started having, before, you know, COVID started. So she, as like a...
A preschooler.
Yeah.
So there's, there's students who have never had school without masks, or as you said, you know.
Yeah, very short time.
I have to say that my eighth grader said he is not wearing it, but it's in his pocket. And he thought it was very funny to see actual teachers' faces. He's never seen their faces before. So I think it's a big adjustment. And then he had one of his friends said she just felt weird not having it, so she had it under her chin. So I think we're running into that a little bit, too, even in the high school level.
Adrian. Just to add to that, when we had negotiations last night, I had to ask Matt who somebody was because I had never seen her without a mask, and I didn't recognize her.
Thankfully, I knew who she was.
Yeah, because I felt, you know, it's like, is she one of the, was she at a last meeting? It's like, yeah. It's like, I felt really stupid, but I just didn't recognize.
I asked my 11-year-old. I actually joked with her and said she has to wear a mask. She went, "Hi-yah!" and gave me like a karate chop. No way, Dad. Okay, I'm gonna say we can move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
You're muted.
We're not.
Oh, you're not.
Not. We heard that. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an executive session. And Brian, do you want to help me out with this? Because I have not, I have all the books, but I have not read them.
Oh, okay. What are your...
Or with...
One big request.
Okay.
Look at that.
Okay.
You see where it is?
Where's the motion?
This is what you want. You're going to make a, you need a motion to go into executive session for this reason. One VSA Section 213.
Okay. I want to make a motion to go into executive session for one VSA Section 213A3. The appointment of an, or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that the public body shall make a final decision, the final decision to hire an applicant, a public officer or employee, in an open meeting, and shall explain the reasons for its final decision during open meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second, Liz.
Okay, I can still vote because Brian's doing something. Okay.
Want me to send that to you? That line you just drew. You got it?
Okay. All in... I can't see everybody, so if there's somebody who is not in favor, please speak up.
I'd say we're good.
Okay, I am going to take that as...
Can we have the link?
Send in it in a, in a second, Andrea.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
And for the public, we will be coming back. Up to them if they wanted to vote into the session.
The executive session.
That's up to you.
No.
What did you ask?
Students. Would they be, are student board members? Would it be appropriate for them to be in?
No, I don't think so.
No. Okay. Okay.
And then BJ, do I need to step out?
Yes.
Are you leaving or are we leaving?
I think it would be easy enough since concerning, I think this is going to be an extensive convers, a pretty big conversation, that it would be helpful if we were in that room.
I was setting up to stay here.
Yeah, Brian set it up to stay here.
And Brian will stay on the...
Oh, I need to vote for, actually, go into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, second, and all in favor for going into executive session. I'm going with you, Dan. Okay.
Sorry, am I the only one that have to?
Was that Len?
No, I lost sound, too.
Not to BJ.
Okay, so we are coming out of executive session at 9:17. And I have to make a motion to, oh my goodness, I have to go get the names. It's confidential. I just want to make sure I have the names correctly.
Oh, that would be good.
I cannot stay here. I'm not going to be able to say those. Okay, I would like to make a motion that we bring both Brian Hill and Barbara Ann Kamons-Montrel.
Sounds good enough.
Barbara Ann, forward to, what is the, what's the word?
As final.
As final.
As final candidates. Do I have a motion?
Oh, yes. I'll second.
We have first, second. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. And that looks unanimous. Congratulations to the two candidates. Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you, Brian, tonight or tomorrow, about times and all of that stuff.
Thank you, Jackie. BJ, do you want to mention principal reports?
Yeah, I was about to do that. So we're looking at the time, and I wish we thought of this before we went into executive session, but if the principals, I think we can safely skip that if you want to have a life tonight.
Go to bed.
Get to sleep before school's out.
Get to sleep, see your family. You're welcome to jump off. The next thing is approve the stakeholder process.
BJ, can I make a motion that we table 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 and jump to committee reports?
So 10 is the approval of the stakeholder process. 11 is the board discussion interview process. We have principal updates, teacher appreciation project, and future meeting locations and table those.
Do we have to do 10 and 11, though, or are they, as they're taking this interview?
Yeah, I think 10 and 11 have to.
10 and 11 are already done, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
In open session?
We have to do it in an open session. So, no. So 12, 13, and 14, to, we have a motion to table all three of those. Do I have a second? We have a second. All in favor? Okay. Those have been, 12, 13, and 14 have been tabled, and we'll move those to next meeting. The stakeholder process, what we are going to do here is on Tuesday, September 22nd, we are starting at 6 o'clock and again at...
6:45.
6:45. We're going to have a public, a place that the public can...
Did you say September, March?
Sorry, you said September and I believe March was a long, long question that folks are wondering about.
But then I thought I heard it wrong.
Yeah, March.
March.
Next week, next Tuesday, we're going to have a stakeholder... Sam, is that what you're thing, calling me out on? Is that the raising your hand thing? Yeah, okay. Next Tuesday, the 22nd, March 22nd, at 6 o'clock, and then again at 6:45, we will be having an interview, a place for the public to be able to log in via Google Meet, completely virtual, to listen in on an interview of the candidates.
And that will have a form for people to request, to have questions.
Yeah. And after that meeting, there is a Google form where everybody who is attending those, that, oh God, I guess it's the end of the day for me.
It's the form.
Everybody who has attended that virtual meeting with the candidates will be able to give feedback to the board.
Yes, correct. Yeah, we'll get all the details worked out.
Okay.
And I'll be...
But that we are going to have requests, questions from...
Okay, and we are, yes, thank you.
We can thank.
Okay, and we are going to be requesting questions for you to fill out. What I will say to the public is please, front porch forum, we've decided we're going to be posting it on. It will be on the website. We'll make sure that's on the school board website. So there will be, look for those for more information, and save the date for 3:20, next Tuesday at 6 and at 6:45, to meet with the potential candidates. I think that's that one. Just reminding everybody, you guys voted me in.
You're doing fine.
It's your first meeting.
It's the, it's getting, I'm getting tongue-tied on this one. Board interview process.
Does there have to be a, we don't need to do a motion or anything for that meeting?
I don't think so.
We'll do a warning.
We'll do a warning.
Yeah.
A warning for what? What are you talking about?
Well, for the stakeholder process, for the stakeholder ones, it's not an actual meeting, though.
No, I don't think you need to.
I think it's treated like, that's treated like the community connections.
Right, but Ann's going to have to post the...
Yeah, you'll have to post.
Link and all that stuff.
You will get a message from Jackie with the blurb that's going out, along with several of us who agreed to post to front porch forum. Okay.
And other community access points.
And other community access points. That was, we're going to get it out there. The next thing is the board interview process. The way that that will work for the public will know is that the afternoon of 3:23, that Wednesday, we will be meeting. And I think that was warned, but...
It's warned for 2:30.
It's warned for 2:30. We were actually going to warn that, you said, suggested 4:30.
4:30. We're going to move it. We need to change the time.
We need to change the time to 4:30 for that meeting. And the board will have an in-person interview with the two candidates, all the board members.
We do need to also have a link for board members that Brian needs to produce.
Yes. I will reference that, since it's not a hybrid meeting. I don't want to go too into that too much.
Yeah, got it.
Len?
Just a point of clarification. I thought those interviews were going to be at 5:00 and 6:30, and that although we were going to get together about 4:30 per Jackie's suggestion, but shouldn't it be warned for 5, for 5:00 and not 4:30?
Most of that will happen in executive session, so...
Yeah, the 4:30 part will be executive session.
You should probably still warn it and then go right into executive.
Yeah, I would still warn it at 4:30 and go right into executive session.
Sort of like what we did when we were having the search committee, where we just went through the whole...
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to warn it for 4:30?
We're going to warn it for 4:30. I think it's safe to say that 5:00 will likely be our first interview.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that. I just...
Okay.
I had written down 5:00 and then it was 4:30, so we're good.
No, we're good, okay. Anything more with the interview process? Okay. We are tabling principal updates, teacher appreciation project, future meetings, conversation. Thank you, principals and administrators who did stay and show up. I, we do appreciate you. So now I'm going to go to committee reports, negotiations.
Oh, we're making progress. We have a master agreement that's being reviewed by both sides for the teachers. And, you know, hopefully if everything looks okay to everybody, we'll have ratification at our next meeting, and if not, the meeting afterwards. And the support staff, we're moving, moving along.
Nice. Personnel. Len?
Yes, indeed. I've got a few things. I'll try to move through them here quickly. We've got some contracts that we need to approve. First is middle school softball. We have two contracts, one for Cindy Van Dean and a second for Brandy Gillette, and I would move that we offer those contracts.
So moved?
I'll second.
I think Sam seconded it.
Yeah, you call me in.
Sure, I can do that. Any discussion on those two? All those in favor? Hands opposed? Some things?
Are you voting to approve?
Voting to approve, sorry. I distracted.
I see Doug approved. Okay. Everybody in the room, raise their hand. Oh, yeah, we have to call it. I'll call it out for you if you want, so I can, because I can see everybody in the room.
Fine. Am I free to move along?
Move along.
Okay. Middle school baseball assistant. Again, two positions, Jacob Berry and Nicole Smith. And I would make a motion that we offer Jacob Berry and Nicole Smith both contracts for middle school baseball assistants.
Second.
Okay.
Sam?
All in favor, raise your hand. It, there you go. Looks unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Next is Brandon Ryan for track and field. So I would make a motion to offer Brandon Ryan contract for the track and field coach position.
I'll second that, too. I'm on a roll.
All in favor? And looks unanimous.
Okay, next is JV baseball, and I make a motion that we offer Jake Downey position, contract for the position of JV baseball.
I'll second.
I keep forgetting to say, discussion? All in favor? I'll get these one of these days.
Okay, JV baseball. JV and varsity assistant, assistant baseball, Caleb Whitney. And I would make a motion that we offer Caleb the contract for junior varsity and varsity assistant.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? It looks unanimous. Andrea, you are hard to see, just to let you know.
Next is Ronald Nagel, the position, coach for the varsity football, as an assistant coach for varsity football. And I would make that a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I have a question. I have a question. So I'm sorry, I didn't ask this in personnel. He's adding to all of the other coaches for football, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted, that's the head coach adding another...
Yes. And, and just to clarify, too, one other thing, there's no salary for him at this point yet. And so once the head coach has filled all of the positions, then he will designate, and he's not going to go over what's budgeted already, but he will divide it up among his assistants. among his assistants.
Okay, I, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor? Looks unanimous. Okay.
Okay, two more. We're almost done. Rodney Stork, who is a full-time custodian now, and he's under the support staff master agreement, but he is also willing to help drive the bus, so...
Which is fantastic.
In order to do that, we have to offer him a letter of employment, so I would make a motion that we offer Rodney Stork a letter of employment as a bus driver from March 21st till June 30th.
I will second that.
Yeah.
Discussion? Thank you, Rodney. All in favor? That looks like a big yes.
I vote twice.
Can I just mention that Rodney is helping us out in a way that is keeping us running our existing routes? We are one bus driver away from not being able to do that, so Rodney's doing, doing a huge job by joining the team there.
That's very nice. Very appreciated.
Yeah. Tell Rodney we said thanks. And then the last one is for unified basketball, Coach Kim Minieri, and so I would make a motion that Kim Minieri be offered a contract as unified basketball coach.
And I will second that.
Discussion? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor? Looks unanimous.
I'm done.
You don't want to specify when your next meeting is?
If you insist, it will be April 6th.
That's the first meeting, yep.
April 6th, at 6:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
Policy, and it's not me this time, we have a new chair for policy. Andrea?
Who's going to need a lot of help from the old chair? Because I have no idea what I'm doing yet. So, we had our first meeting, and I have no idea where my stuff is. So, I guess at the last policy meeting before election, and we had brought to the board the C3 policy, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, BJ, it went for final read, so we actually need approval.
Yep, we, you need to make a motion for approval for, to approve policy C3, public comment at board meetings.
Exactly, what he said.
So, the best word ever in this building, so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a second.
All in favor?
I'll call it. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Paul, you good? One, two, three, and Liz, please let us know if you, if not, but I will assume a yes on that one, because she seems to be eating.
And, okay, so with that done, there's actually two that have, Jody and Brian have sent me, that will be discussed at our next meeting on April 12th at 5:30. And those policies will be, unless we need to call further, they're kind of a push ahead, and then we'll discuss the rotation of the next, all the other policies, too.
And those are, those are two that we appreciate working in quickly, because one is the, the state has updated their special education procedures practices manual, and there is a model policy that we really should adopt to be following that, so that's timely to get that in quickly. The other one is a policy that deals with bonuses for staff, which we can do after the bonuses, because we're in, we're in this interesting phase of the pandemic where, we did this a little bit previous years, where we had come up with ways of taking care of our people while we were, schools were closed, and we could, we could adopt the policy and have it be retroactive. So that's one we definitely need to get done, but we're covered because we're allowed to be retroactive for those, the bonuses we paid. So that's why we're asking for those to get moved in quickly, so we appreciate that.
All right, I think that was it. Right, BJ?
I, yes, I think so.
Okay.
We do have a...
I do, just to go back to negotiations for a second, was there any conversation that you were going to have about the side agreement?
Oh, yeah.
For vaccinations? I meant to ask that at negotiations, and I forgot.
Yep, and we didn't have a COVID update today. Yes, I will be meeting with union representation on Friday, so we will be talking about the side letter that we have...
Because it's sort of out of date.
Yes, staff vaccinations and those requirements, testing and things that go along with that, so we will be looking at that Friday, absolutely.
Thanks.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep, yep.
And Ann, on that last vote where I mentioned Liz was not able to vote, can you put her as abstain? Or something, other than, yes, I realized I voted for her, and I do not want that.
As a president?
She dropped, she has dropped off, so I just want to make a note that, because what I said publicly was not correct.
Yeah, she noted in the chat, she had a sick child and had to leave.
Yeah, okay. With that in mind, Adrian, do you think you can do finance, plan for that? When we get to it? You're on the committee, right?
Yeah, but do I have any of the paperwork? Actually, I have the stuff from Karen, yes, I will.
I figured, I don't know how to read that yet, so...
Okay, no, I'll do it.
Okay, but we are now on buildings and ground. Doug?
Nothing major. Last weekend, the weekend before, we had a little issue going on at Clarendon where the drain field was shooting off, not only a little light that said there's a problem, it was shooting an alarm off that the fire department was able to, to let me know about. I went there and shut that off, and I think Gary went and straightened out. It's probably an ice situation, we talked about that during building and grounds, that we had something that was great to have, the problem was it was icing up and setting off at times. I'm not sure if that's what it is or not, I haven't been able to get a hold of Gary for a while, so, but that got straightened out, and everything else is fine. Next meeting will probably be sometime next month, I'll, I'll schedule it in, and I'll let everybody know.
Community engagement, Sam?
Hi, so our...
Actually, I have to, I have to actually, I can't always assume this, at this meeting. Assume Sam, you're the chair.
Yes, that, the first announcement out, yes, that is what happened. We talked at our last meeting about the plans going forward for the community survey for all of our community, to be our initial goal, is to have the first one given before the 20, at the beginning of, before the 23 school year starts, so over, at the end of the summer, essentially, we're going to get information on that. Our community conversations, this is the most pressing topic, I'm sure for folks, so now that we have the 22nd being the community stakeholder input for our superintendent hire, I am going to try and do some email scheduling to see if I can maybe get enough folks to, before April, get a community conversation together on this top, on these topics, dare I say, of the interwovenness of budgeting and Act 173, I'm bad with numbers, so I wrote that one down, and so I will be reaching out as soon as we can confirm a date for that, I'll let folks know, because I don't want to let that go until our next committee meeting, which is April 12th at 6:30. So I'm hopeful we'll get that taken care of before then, and if it needs to, we'll make it to, sounds... Oh, and just a really exciting thing, the music showcase, that we talked about, just a really great community event, I was able to go to that, and we're really going to make a push to make sure that more folks know about all the different things now that we can actually be at in-person events again, what's going on and what's coming up, and so I just want to thank all of the musicians, be they staff, faculty, or student, who came together and made me cry as soon as I heard them all start making music together, so thank you all for your work on that, that was really meaningful, it meant a lot.
Okay. Finance.
Okay, so I will fill in. Accounts payable warrant dated 3/16/22, we have a general fund expenditure of $347,190.96, a general fund, not distinguished from the first, of $14,581.13, the after-school program of $455.96, and the lunch program, $3,935.63, for a total of $366,163.68. We also have a couple of checks written out of student activities, Mill River, $156.43, Tinmouth, $1,583, and Wallingford, $223.20, for a total of one, excuse me, $1,962.63. And I am looking for approval of those two totals, if I could have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Doug.
I'll second. Second.
Thanks, Sam. Is there any discussion? I don't know if, Doug, do you want to weigh in on this one, or have you not had a...
Yeah, I looked through, nothing I could tell was a problem, I was impressed that we had all the snowflakes done, and we had our people come in, and they received a pretty good paycheck for it.
Okay.
There was a lot of snow around, they took care of.
Thanks. Anybody else have a comment or question? Okay, then I will call the question. Please raise your hand if you are in favor of those two expenditure amounts. Okay, thank you, and then we have the payroll warrant dated March 11th for a regular payroll of $559,321.74, and I'm looking for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Thank you, Doug. Second?
Sure, second.
Thank you, Sam. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please raise your hand if you are in approval of that payroll warrant. Thank you.
I notice it's not on the agenda, but we have transacted out of the legal business, which I think can apply to getting the ad hoc committees' updates. So, Matt?
We have not had a meeting since the last board meeting. We did have one scheduled for next week, but it's now going to be overtaken by the superintendent search stuff, so I'll be rescheduling.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
It's all right, no worries.
Len, you were kind of the cherish of that last one.
Yep, and we haven't met in a while, and I will be setting up, and partially because of, as Matt said, there's a lot of meetings going on, and so, hopefully, after things calm down a little bit, we'll get back on track, and we should be okay, I'll announce when that meeting is going to be.
Okay. I have a point of clarification. Since these were established before the reorg, do we need, we, no, we, we put them back in the last, okay, good.
And they still have their charge.
And they still have their charge. Is there any other legal business that anybody wants to bring up? Okay, hearing none. Agenda building, I have...
I'll go first.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm going to add in the principal updates, the teacher appreciation project, and future meeting locations back into next weeks.
Can I just comment on, like, I think for flow, like, the principal updates should be within the, like, public comments, student...
So they can be...
Yeah, so it's like, we should show that, you know, put them a little higher up. Yeah, make sure that they're, because they're, they have a long day, and then...
Yeah.
Especially to come and then not get to talk is not ideal.
Sure, they agree.
Yeah. Matt?
I know last summer, there was some public outcry on athletics, and I, from the student reps, they said that athletics seemed to be doing well, there's a lot of kids signing up for it. It's been a while since we've gotten any kind of an update, do you think maybe we can get Kim Minieri, come give an update on athletics?
I can reach out to Kim, yeah. Throw that in with principal updates.
I'd love to hear what's going on with it and stuff.
Totally.
Absolutely.
Okay. On athletic update, Len?
Yeah, just a quick question. We didn't give you any information in terms of the principal hiring process, did we?
No, we just talked about that in personnel.
Okay. Do you think that's anything we just need to sort of briefly talk about? Well, I cannot, I guess I will. Brian and I went through the candidates, we chose three or four candidates that we felt were good candidates, we actually came up with pretty much the same ones together separately, and then, at this point, Brian and Coral are doing interviews with those folks, and then, once we get past that, what's, what's, oh, we're going to meet with stakeholders in both communities, and get their input as well, and then, within the next two weeks or so, hopefully, we'll have principals in Clarendon and Shrewsbury. Is that sort of accurate, Brian?
Yes, absolutely. Clarendon, next week, we're going to be doing the, the committee work, and Matt is going to join that group and help us. Sam, Adrian, I'll be reaching out to the two of you about the Shrewsbury committee the week after, to try and get that set up, and we'll go from there, and we hope the early April board meeting will have candidates to bring to the board.
That's great.
Awesome. Back to the agenda building, we are going to have a goals approval, because we were quite successful in our last retreat.
We might have our negot, we might have a contract ratification.
Okay, sounds like we might have contract ratification, too, and I want to just put it in there as a checkbox, that I would like to schedule a second retreat to complete our bylaws. I think our last one worked, we worked well, we got everybody up to board, I think, and we need to get that checked off, too, so...
So we'll put scheduling of that on, is that what you're saying?
Scheduling, scheduling for the bylaws, not working on them. Just kidding, so... Not hearing anything, I want to say adjourned by consensus at 9:48.
Vote with your feet.